Alderman Taulmy.
I just have one question, and it has to do with, maybe it is just in the drawings. When the truck, the truck originally shows up, okay, are they going to be coming from the west?
Yes.
So, so this, the first drawing with the truck on, you know, on Irving Park Road, and, actually, the one that's on the floor right there. Okay? That one, right. Right, so when the truck comes in, they'll actually be going over through that first side, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so whatever that drawing is, is not accurate as it, as it shows. Is that a correct statement?
Well, no, this is, this is, this shows the truck back.
Him going out.
Exiting, right.
Oh, okay, so you didn't show us one where he's coming in.
The one where it's coming in, okay, is this one. It shows it going eastbound from the west on Irving Park and crossing over the mountable barrier and going back to the rear.
Oh, he's still, he's still gonna come over that on the, on the right side though?
Sure, otherwise, it's unrealistic, as was pointed out. But it's, it's not, it's not a, as Dan pointed out, it's not a two-foot barrier.
Right.
It's a barrier that's probably 12 inches or so.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Car, but not a truck.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Alderman Winger and Alderman Subak.
Thank you, Alderman, Canape. As we all know, well, first let me verify that to make this pass, this needs a supermajority, correct? Because it was turned down, it's zoning. Okay. And from the beginning, I have been against this, and I did not feel it was right for the community. I didn't like the design, didn't like anything. And so I believe at the first meeting, I spoke out on those issues. And, and then, as we've been discussing it, I've seen a lot of improvement. I've seen design change, I've seen working with the structure itself, and it's positive. So, I'm down to a few remaining issues. And as I believe Alderman Canape had brought up earlier in the process, I do have a concern of similar neighboring businesses being run out of business with this structure. And I, I look at our standards questions, one through seven. Item number three here, "The special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity of the subject property for the purposes already permitted in such zoning district, nor substantially diminish and impair other property valuations within the neighborhood." And I would ask that if, if you feel strongly, strongly that this is going to be good for a community, that I'd like to see some numbers early on next week and some research that shows that there is a demand for this business and that all, that there's a high demand in the whole area itself. Thank you.
Alderman Subak.
I disagree a little bit on the, on the factors, because you're comparing a tenant in a building versus a, an owner-occupied building. And if you're going with, I don't know, I think it's AutoZone that's located in Georgetown Square, we have no idea if that's a one-year lease or a 10-year lease. Only the AutoZone knows that and the owner of that building. I think when you talk about that factor, it's, will this use, is it gonna also hurt the businesses next, you know, the building next door with respect to, there's a restaurant, there's a food place, I'm not there, it's a diet place, there's a hair salon. Is it gonna inhibit those immediate in the, around there? And I guess, the fact that this is a special use, we keep some unique control, and if we deny that, I admit, I've said from the start, I'd rather it be nicer if they sold coffee or something else, but, you know, if traffic is an issue over there, and we can control this truck, and I'm gonna get a little bit more specific on the times, you know, if it was a Starbucks there, traffic might be backing up much further down Irving Park Road, but they wouldn't have to come before us, they're allowed under that use to use it, and, and we're gonna stop, be stuck with the worst traffic problem. This is gonna be some commercial use, but not a lot. So, I might go there once or twice a year, but mostly this is a lot of wholesale sales or sales to auto repair shops in the area. So, I, I don't think you're gonna have a real high volume of traffic going in and out. However, from the data they did provide, we are gonna have significant sales tax, you know, from a space that's about 175 feet wide. And so, I understand that it's not the perfect thing, but what is the alternative? My question on the multiple median is, I think we were, I'm gonna speak for the police chief, but I, my guess is we'd want a mountable median there, because even though it's right in, right out, every once in a while, you're gonna get that even person in a car that's gonna try to do it the other way, go against it, and it, probably for safety issues, would you want it to be a mountable median if you had your way? The pork chop.
Well, obviously, there's an engineer that's making this recommendation based on their, their studies. I'm trying to recall exactly how we have it at the Burger King at this time, I believe that is a raised.
It's mountable, I mount it all the time.
And if you look at the site of that, you'll see that there are quite a few tire rubs on that.
Right.
I was concerned about the truck getting in and out, and I did talk with Ross Clicker about this earlier in the week, and I see how they are managing that now with the mountable, and it seems like that is the only, the only alternative that's available.
Then my, my other question is, because this is the traffic plan from their hired engineer, do we have anybody in-house, or do we wanna send this to our independent traffic engineer, just to verify, because I, I don't know if that's the right movement? And then, just to make, just to verify it's correct, number one. And then my follow-up question for the petitioners are, even though our police chief said it's the bad traffic is in the afternoon, would you be agreeable that it's one semi a day, and it's not to be between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and not to be between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM?
I guess it's okay.
I mean, then that, then we're.
So, nine to three?
Nine to three would be the permitted delivery times. Or before eight, but I.
Or after, I don't care if you do it in the middle of the night, that'd be great. So, between nine and three is when that. And to the Alderman, Wesley, if the truck, if, if it's an independent truck and it's backing up, hopefully one of our officers is there, because they'll give them a ticket and they'll make it real, you know, expensive for them to be backing up on Irving Park Road, that's a violation of the vehicle code. So, have we had our own independent expert look at this?
I guess that would be me.
If you're qualified, I don't know, Gary, if that's your expertise, or if that's something you wanna defer?
This, this particular issue, they're using, and you can look on the, on the tables there, what's known as a WB-50 truck. That's a semi that would typically be found in more urban areas like us. It's not an over-the-road semi that you would find out on the interstate highways. The interstate highways, they run a 50, 53-foot trailer. This is more of a 43-foot trailer. You, you see them probably all the time, and you don't even realize the difference, because it's not like, you know, one's painted red, one's painted blue, but you, you mean, you see them all the time, we all see them all the time, a WB-50 is a very typical truck. And the auto turn program is, basically, you, you enter in the, the path, and the, the CAD software does the rest for you. So, I, this is depicted how, how that vehicle can move.
And are the petitioners agreeing that they'll limit their truck to the WB-50 and not anything larger? We have a record, so that's, you're nodding your head, so it's yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. And you also agree to incorporate your terms of your landscaping plan into your petition?
Yes.
Absolutely. The landscaping plan that we presented today is, is, they are committed, this is what they're, that they will build.
My other question for staff is, did I meet the meeting when we got the pointer? That's Alderman Shaki's own pointer, correct? Or did I miss the meeting when we got those as a council? I believe he supplies his own pointer, right?
Yes.
I ask that every time, because I like it, and I don't have one down here, that's your own personal pointer.
I allow you to go out and buy one.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you remember, okay, when, way back when you presented the design that we accepted? Do you remember the date on that? October 23rd?
I can't see the date.
You know, I, Alderman, this is the elevation that we were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't have a, on this drawing, I could find out the, the exact date of when this date, when this drawing was dated, and this is the drawing that they are committed to. I just, I can't find.
This one either, Ross, yeah, okay.
Oh, he's got the full side, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so there, that's, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Anything further on the question? Okay, if not, make a motion to reprove. A request for a special use permit with lot consolidation for the construction and use of 6,000-square-foot facility auto parts store at 372 West Irving Park Road, and direct the city attorney to draw up the appropriate ordinance. Subject two, final rev, one, final review and approval of all engineering by our city engineers. Two, the structure to be built with the materials and design as proposed in the drawings dated October 23rd, 2006. Three, that a mountable right-in, right-out pork chop be used on the Irving Park ingress, egress. Four, that any delivery vehicle will be 50 feet or less. Five, that a.
No, yeah, WB, it's 42 and a half feet.
We're talking about, they showed a maximum of 50 foot, a maximum, if they're less, they're less. Is that correct?
No. It's a.
The WB-50 is just a.
A code name.
That's, yeah, that's, that's the designation for the type of, of truck. It's actually a 43-foot trailer, and I don't have the dimensions in front of me, but, yeah, and you got the tractor.
I'm just saying that it cannot accommodate anything bigger than a 50 foot.
WB-50, right, correct.
Well, that was.
Truck and trailer.
Any delivery vehicle includes truck and trailer. Okay?
Trailer and a horse.
Will be 50 feet or less. Five, that a, and this was shown, I believe, in one of the early drawings, that a six-foot wooden fence be used to provide a buffer to the residential property to the south. Six, that delivery times be restricted to between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. Any additional items?
Do we incorporate the landscaping plan?
And to incorporate the landscaping, number seven.
And just one other clarification, Chairman, I think you, you incorporated their design and materials, and I gotta say it, the color, because that was a significant issue, we went from the blue bomb to the brown.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay, with those additions, Mayor Johnson.
Just a clarification of what you said, the fence to the south, but then it also has to be a little bit to the west, there's another residence that it abuts. The rear 50-foot of the property is to, abuts a residence to the west.
I believe that was in the drawing.
Yep.
Yes. All right, but does any, second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the roll call, please.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Canape?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Taulmy?
Yes.
Okay, simple majority, the motion passes. Okay. I don't know that we need a super. Do we need a?
You need a supermajority. In, in committee, committee is just making a recommendation to council, it's just a simple majority, at council, it will require six votes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. And if I could have maybe two days beforehand, like by Tuesday if possible, thank you.
Last item then, is items to be considered at future meetings. Change it to ZBA procedures, model ordinance requiring community antenna television system to obtain franchises, RFPs for zoning code and zoning map amendment before zoning district. Any additional items? Alderman Taulmy.
Yeah, I, I had requested that we re, relook at, I think right now, where we require flood storage is on 10,000 acres, or no, I'm sorry, it's larger, it's gotta be larger, a two-acre property, and I had requested that that be put on for, that we review it again, because my personal belief is that it should be, is that several years ago, there was a, you know, Wooddale used to have it, was just about an acre. If you had bought an acre or a little over an acre, you had required stormwater retention, and it was changed to accommodate certain people. And that needs to be reviewed and possibly changed back, because we had a few instances where properties have come in just shy of the two acres, and they weren't required stormwater, and yet they will create major stormwater problems for the area.
All right, let's know.
I apologize, that's not, that's not listed under my agenda for future items, but it should be. That issue is already come to the Stormwater Commission, and that it will be coming before the committee in the future, but it, it should be on my agenda as a.
But it's under your agenda then, not building?
Public Works, and I, and I apologize, it's not showing on there tonight, but it will.
That's okay.
Mayor Johnson.
Adoption of a condo conversion ordinance, so that if this problem comes up again with other units, we have something in policy in place.
Definitely. Any other items? If not, make a motion to adjourn. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most, we stay adjourned.
Please, yeah, if we could take a, you know, five to 10-minute break, I think we need it.
I'm reconvening the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of February 8th. And let the minute take or reflect, the same members are present. The next item that was on our agenda to discuss is a report and recommendation on a way to address water billing delinquencies. And staff has given us a write-up on potential recommendations to address our code and to address the delinquent accounts. And I'd like to go one by one on the suggestions, but before I do, I will, I'll ask for if Ms. Powers wants to give any background or additional information before we go into each item.
Thank you Chairman Winger. Basically, what we're attempting to do here is bring several code sections into alignment. There's a code section for water billing, there's one for sewer billing, and one for garbage billing. And the code is not consistent in the way it defines delinquency. And the fee that's charged when water has been turned off, this is to restore service, has been at $50 for a very, very long time. So essentially, we're trying to do two things here. Bring all the code sections into alignment, define delinquency as 28 days rather than 21. And then change that turn-on fee from $50 to $75. To give you an idea about the size of the delinquency problem, I have the list of all of the notices that were sent out this week. There are 280 customers on this list for a total of $92,433.96. There are people on here who haven't paid a bill in a couple of years. And up until the last month or so, I don't believe there were any shut-offs in Wooddale. It wasn't happening, although the code provides for it and certainly is very clear about it. Two things to remember about shut-offs, we do have a number of customers who are sewer and garbage only. Clearly, there's nothing we can shut off there, so the city's only recourse after attempting to get a payment plan out of these people or just dunning them is to file liens against the property. And there are many liens outstanding for the city of Wooddale that have been filed with the DuPage County Clerk. That certainly is something that we'll continue to do, but I prefer to take these outstanding receivables and turn them into cash for the city. So one of the ways that I can do that is to have the code be ironclad in terms of how delinquency is defined, what time period there is, and what the charge is to be turned back on. So if the council takes that action, that will enable the Finance Department personnel to proceed with shut-off procedures and collect this past due money. Out of 280 people, we have 5,471 water accounts. So that's a fairly substantial number of customers who don't pay on time. And they have a variety of stories, I've heard most of them, and you probably have too throughout your life. You know, it's like the dog ate your homework, only this time the check got lost, or it flew out the car window, or there are shirts in the drop box, but of course, it's not. Had somebody tell me that they paid a bill at 5:30 on Monday, and the Finance Department closes at 4:30. All kinds of stories. So we do need to take this kind of shut-off action, and we need to have our code be perfectly logical in all of its sections.
Are there any initial questions for Ms. Powers before we go through the suggestions? I'm gonna... Well, I do have a couple of comments before we do that then. I just want to make sure that we're looking off of the same copy here. There was an initial copy sent out in a packet, and then it looks like there's another copy on our desk. So is everyone looking at the...
Two eight.
Two eight. Gotcha, okay, does everyone have the revised copy?
No, I don't either.
Where did you say revised?
Okay, right there. Okay, good, okay. Okay, so then the only comment I have because of the other things that look like they're addressed, is that number two, item number two, and, or question actually, that it shows discontinued after seven days after the delinquency. So my concern there is that part of, I know what we're trying to address, is the past due over 90, past due over 180 days, like, and we have a lot of those that we need to start zeroing in on. So if we have the seven-day policy after something is, after an account is considered delinquent after the 28 days, I just feel like there's that timeframe of just maybe 60 days total. And I don't want to start shutting off water of the people that might go on vacation and, or go away for, let's say, three months out of the winter. And they haven't made the arrangements. I know that the responsible thing to do would be make arrangements before you leave, but not everyone thinks of those things. And I don't want people to come home with their water shut off after 90 days. So the seven-day proposal, you know, if we do 60 days there, or 45, does that help with my issue?
Well, first of all, the bills are due on the 21st day after they're rendered. So when you get a shut-off notice or a delinquency notice, you're not getting that until the next billing cycle. So now you're already up to 21 plus another 30 days. Okay? So I don't know how much time the council wants to give to people. If you want to be in excess of 90 before we would do shut-off, people could run up a pretty substantial bill in 90 days. And see, when there's no activity, that's what usually happens, there's no activity. It's not people coming in and paying a portion of their bill. I have 38 to 40 people right now who are on payment plans, they've negotiated those with the city. And we do that for people who come in and say, you know, I lost my job, or I've got a medical problem right now, and, you know, money's not coming in. Rather than just tell people, go ahead and file bankruptcy, we work with them. And those people sign an agreement, and they pay smaller installments. But the goal is to get the bill completely paid off in six to 12 months, depending on what their situation is. But most of the delinquencies I'm talking about on this list are people who just don't pay for their water.
Right.
That's it. And they're not people out of town, that's not what's happening, it's people who don't pay their bills.
No, I understand that, that there is a lot of delinquent people that just haven't paid their bills. But I don't want this new code to actually shut off the people that do pay their bills, but then haven't for 60 days. Like, they miss the first bill, then the second bill, you know, then at the end of the billing cycle, then they get shut off.
So what you're saying is, after the 21 days and the 28 days, then add a further 30 days?
I read this that item number one changes delinquency to 28 instead of 21. Is that right?
It changes the definition of delinquent.
Okay.
From 21 to 28 days.
Right.
So there's an addition now of seven days.
Correct.
To that. And then you still have another 30 days after that.
Correct.
So now we're up to 58 days. But you want it to be another 30?
I would encourage all of us to also look at the past due lag, that the people that are in this bracket that we're talking about aren't really the problem, I think is, Ms. Powers said. Alderman, Sue Beck?
It's 28 days after rendition of the bill. Shouldn't it be 28 days, that you're delinquent 28 days after the due date? So if it's due on the...
Right.
Okay, that's, so if it's due on the 28th, if I don't pay it by 28 days thereafter, it's considered delinquent.
That's right.
And then you're saying, seven days thereafter, I'll get a notice that says that the city can go forward and shut you off at seven days without further notice?
Well, we've always given more notice, and in fact, I think they have a card that they hang on the door to tell people that the water's going to be shut off. There are quite a few steps that take place, it's just that the shut-off wasn't taken.
So I think, Alderman, the concern is legitimate, because it's going to be 28, and it's a notice, they're still going to go out and put something on the door before it's actually shut off.
That's right.
So, you know, I think if you add the extra days, that notice that goes on the door is not going to be, you're going to be 120 days out possibly before, I think that's too long. So, you know, these are just the notices from the city, there's still the door noticed before it's actually shut off. So it's not going to be shut off 35 days after the bill is late.
How do you figure? That, I would think that after 28 days after it's past due, then in theory, we could put a note on their door and shut off their water in seven days.
No.
Okay, then, then please take me through it so I understand it better.
Let me try to take a stab at it, Maggie, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe it's better to look at it, let's say, month one, they get a bill, they don't pay it, okay? They have until month two to then pay it, so then after month two, they've already not paid for two months. And then after the two months, they get another seven days before it gets shut off. So now, let's say, we're at 67 days. What your proposal is to go beyond that 67 days, I don't know if that's...
Okay, but the code says 67 days, but the reality is, after 67 days, now you're going to give a notice to the Water Department that says, this person hasn't paid their water bill for 67 days. Water Department's not going to get out there the next day. The Water Department then is going to go out and post a notice on their door, because they don't want to go, it's a hassle to shut the water off. So the Water Department's going to put one more notice on the door that we're coming next Tuesday, we're coming next Wednesday, right?
Yes, and in fact, maybe what I should provide the council with before we give you this in ordinance form is the actual timeline of what will happen and which personnel do what. So you can see how that works, because I think we're giving adequate time. And the purpose of going out in person and putting a tag on the building or on the house is, we had a situation a couple of weeks ago where a tenant of a building who took over the upstairs unit hadn't paid the water bill. The landlord hadn't paid the water bill, and they claimed that they weren't aware that there were any unpaid bills because they thought the landlord was paying the bill. And of course, the landlord said, no, they were supposed to pay the bill. And I really didn't care, because whoever used the water had to pay the bill, that was my decision. So they told us that they never received that mail, and it's very possible if it came to landlord, or it came to occupant, and it was left downstairs, and they were living upstairs, they wouldn't know that. But if you put a big door hanger on, your water's being shut off, that does tend to get people's notice. And so that's why we use different approaches. I'll also tell you that the Water Department personnel go out frequently on these accounts where we're wondering what the story is. Who lives there, does anybody live there, is the house occupied, is it vacant? And we put all that information into our files so that we're not sending notices to a house that's vacant, or perhaps there was a fire and it's been abandoned for a while. It's just a, it's sort of a continuum. All we're really attempting to do here is put those three code sections together, because the bills are for three different items, but they're all on one bill. We just have to make that consistent, how we define delinquency. And at the time, Jeff looked at this and said, well, why don't we increase this turn-on fee too? Because $50 doesn't really cover anybody's time at all to have to go out there and locate the B-box and turn the water off, and then, don't forget, have to go back and turn it back on. So there's time involved, there's a truck involved, and so he was suggesting the $75, which I think is a fairer price. We've adjusted a lot of the city's fees, so that's just, it's an appropriate increase. But when we come back to you in ordinance form, we can also give you a timeline of what happens and when.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call on Alderman Shaiki, then Alderman Coles, Alderman Shaiki?
Yes, two questions. Alderman Winger mentioned about people who are snowbirds. How, what is the normal process for those people who are going to be gone three or four months of the winter?
Well, some people decide to pay in advance, and, you know, they just go ahead and, I had one gentleman who told me that he always pays his whole year in advance, and then in May, he always settles up.
But the normal person isn't going to do that, what happens with those people?
No, then they should let us know.
And if they don't let us know?
Yeah, well, they should give us an address where we can send the bill. If they're in Florida or Arizona, we send the bill there, and a lot of people do it that way. Other people, a good time for people to get involved in the ACH debit program is if they're going to be out of town. The bill gets taken care of when it's due, not a day before, not a day after, and they don't have to worry about it.
Okay, so the people who watch our cable TV...
Absolutely.
Will now know this, because some of them may not.
Sure.
The other question I have is, on number two, the last sentence, if the previous balance is not paid on time, the 5% penalty is applied to that balance as well as to the current amount due.
That's right.
Now, it was just a month ago or so, I pay my bills every two weeks. I take them as I get them, and I put them in a slot, and then two weeks I pay it. Two months ago, I got the water bill, and I put it up there, and it was much, it was very late. Somebody goofed, and our water bills came out real late that time, and I had a lot of complaints about that. So I paid that water bill late, so I paid the 5%. But if I hadn't done that and caught it, the next bill I would have gotten would have had a 5% penalty on the total bill, not just what was overdue, but the present bill as well.
Absolutely, that's how the ordinance was written.
Wow.
Yeah, it's really, it's really steep. I mean, it's very steep.
So if it does get lost in the mail, then people are going to have to pay 5% for the two months.
There again, that's where people would be wise to use the ACH debit program, or to call the city hall, we can do, we can do a...
That program is fine, but sometimes it duplicates itself. I have people tell me, yes, that they've gotten the same water bill twice for the same month. So, and it was taken out of their account, and they caught it.
Oh, no, that's just a notification, that's not a bill.
No, 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 no.
That's just a confirmation.
This was taken out without their knowledge. This is an automatic withdrawal that we, they signed up for, for our water bill. And they had that amount for that month taken out twice. So it wasn't, it wasn't something that was sent by mail, this was automatic.
I've never, I've never ever had a complaint about that, and I would love to see those accounts.
And Mrs. Wesley, your folks, it happened to them.
Okay, no, I mean, I need to see it, because I send the file personally, the ACH debit file, it goes to the bank only one time, and I get a confirmation back from the bank for the total and how many customers there were, and that's the end of it. The file, I mean, I can't duplicate that file. Once it's sent, it's gone.
I'm going to interrupt for a moment. Alderman Wesley, will you ask for the example to be presented to Ms. Powers?
Sure.
So we can just do...
The only way it could happen is if, is if the bank, is the bank screwed up, right? If we're only sending out one file a month, and that's, and I know that to be a fact, that we're only sending out one file, the only way that could happen is for the bank to screw up. And I will tell you, having worked in banks for 30 years, banks do make mistakes.
Well, we don't send it out anyways, we have a company do it, so the company probably...
No, no, not the ACH file.
No, no, the ACH file is something that I have to extract from our billing data on the 21st day of the month. And so, once I send it, I can't take it back, there's nothing I can do about it. All I can do is verify the total of customers and the total dollars in the general ledger, and then it's gone.
So this is something we're telling the people now, if they're watching TV, if you don't get a bill... If you don't get a bill, mark it on your calendar that you do a bill. And if you don't get one, call the city hall and ask for it because otherwise, you're going to be paying five percent on the next month's bill as well.
That's right, yes, and we can print out a duplicate bill for anyone. Even though we use Third Millennium to do our actual mailed billings, we can always pull a bill off our system. It's, it looks a little different, but it's the same bill. So anybody who doesn't, didn't get a bill that needs a bill, they can certainly call the water desk.
I'm going to call Alderman Coles, then, Alderman, can I, then Alderman tell me, Alderman Coles?
Maggie, on your bills, don't you have a balance due, another spot for balance due if you don't pay it?
Yes.
And that's always on the bill too.
Yes.
So anybody that gets a bill knows that they haven't paid it.
Well, it tells you two amounts, what's due by the due date and what's your, what's your amount due if you don't pay it on time. That's right.
I mean, nobody, nobody can complain if they see the total amount is higher than what the average bill is.
Well, and the thing is, every, the bills, we did have that one month where we had so many staff shortages. We were like nine days late in getting the billing done. We had staff shortages in city services as well as in the finance department. So we didn't even have people to get the readings. And we did the best we could to get those bills out. But that's very unusual because there's a, there's steps that are taken by a whole bunch of employees to get to the point of doing the utility billing. And we turn it over within twenty-four hours with Third Millennium. The minute we send that file, they, they get it out, sometimes within four or five hours.
Alderman, can I?
Yeah, just got a question here. Since the bills are, we bill for water, sewer and garbage pickup, garbage collection?
That's right.
If they don't pay the bill, we could stop water. Do we stop garbage collection?
No, there isn't any viable way to do it.
That becomes a freebie.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you'll recall, the customer that we had who hadn't paid for sewer or garbage charges and the bill was two hundred and two thousand dollars, I think you'll recall that one. We got that one settled. For substantially less than the two hundred and two, but that was because it had late payment penalties on it for fifteen years. But, I mean, that's, there's, the city can take action by leaning the property and that is certainly what we do. But understand, we really want to collect these bills and turn questionable customers into good customers again because it's a good faith proposition. The city provides the water, sewer and garbage service and there's a fee and citizens have to pay for that. But when we have garbage and sewer only, there isn't anything else we can do except lean the property. Because there's nothing we can shut off.
Alderman telling me?
I'd like to try and get to the end of this, but I think the bigger issue from, again, from where I'm looking at this is the fact that Maggie just, the very first thing Maggie told us is that we've got ninety-two thousand in arrears. Okay? And over two hundred, you know, out of four thousand customers?
Four seventy-seven.
Out of five thousand customers, you've got over two hundred that haven't paid for one reason or another. Now, knowing, and we've talked about this in many instances where if people are having problems, you know, one way or another, whether it's being unemployed or whatever, you know, that, you know, the city's policy has always been that they can come in and talk to us and we will work with them on solving something. But when you hear that there's over ninety-two thousand dollars outstanding, you know what? I mean, and the other example that Maggie just gave, to me, the issue is, it's got to be fixed. And if it means, you know, after two months, you know, if that person hasn't paid after two months without making the motion to come and talk with somebody at the city about their situation, then you know what, I think it's the responsibility of the city to do what they have to do to protect all of the other residents that are paying their monthly fees, which is, you go and turn off the water. I mean, in two months' time, if you're having an issue where you can't pay, you should have, common sense says, you know, you should be able to talk, you know, come to the city and say, hey, look, I'm having a problem right now, I can't pay. We're not going to turn off the water. But if you go beyond that and you haven't contacted the city one way or another, then you know what? Turn off their water. Turn off, I mean, why should the rest of the residents have to pay for it? You know, again, it's not just a question, you know, earlier, the mayor talked about, you know, the water rates being lowered by DuPage County. But again, I want, you know, that's something we, and I hope when we talk about it, Maggie, you'll bring back the numbers because, you know, we talk about, should we wait, you know, should we lower them, whatever? The bottom line is that you're paying for all the infrastructure that goes along to support those, all the pipes in the ground, all the people, you know, all the equipment. So all I'm saying is that we, you know, we should, the way this is designed right now, I would support the way it's been written out here. And if, and if nobody else, I would make a motion that this...
I understand. I'm going to recognize Alderman Suak and then we'll make the motion.
I just, I agree with everybody, it's the one issue on, I agree with Alderman Shaki that why does the five percent penalty, if you're late, apply to the new bill? If you miss a payment, what's the, that's really a policy decision. If that's the way the old ordinance was written, we're fixing it, now it's time to fix it. If people think it's inherently unfair that if you miss, you forget, whatever, there should be a five percent penalty on that bill, but the current bill, why would be, what's the rationale between a five percent penalty on the current part of that bill?
I don't know, it's always been in the, in the code book from, at least from as long as I can see. It's, it works more like a credit card bill. I think that's probably why it was compounding the five percent on top of the five percent. Because these penalties do get out of whack pretty quickly, there's no payments.
Then we end up waiving them later. So I think, I agree with Alderman Shaki, strike that part that it's five percent on the out-of-balance. We're looking for, we're looking for collection, we're not looking to shut off water because we don't make money on that. So, and we don't want the phone call trying to explain what's the rationale between the five percent and the current bill. So I agree with Alderman Shaki, if he still wants to do it, to strike that portion on the five percent penalty applying to the current amount due. Now you can make your motion, Dan.
And then are you going to make a motion as well?
My question is this, I mean, and I know because I've done this, okay? Where I will come in the day after it's due, after the water bill is due, and I'll drop it in the mailbox out there. But I pay that extra, so you're telling me, and I want to make sure I understand this, that my next bill, because I didn't, I've never really looked at my next bill, as long as I paid that late fee that's assessed, I'm going to be paying an additional five percent next month too?
No, no.
Okay.
And in fact...
Well, I think we need to make that clear, I mean, because...
That's why I'm going to do the steps.
Because I'm listening and, and it's like, geez, I don't understand why, you know, how, how does it work that way, you know?
And if you're late, it's, if you forget it, so your water bill in month one was eighty dollars.
Right.
And you forgot to pay it.
Okay.
Month two, you owe five percent on the eighty, and then let's say in month two, your bill was a hundred. You owe five percent on that hundred also.
Okay, well, then I agree.
No, you wouldn't get the, no, that wouldn't happen. You wouldn't get the five percent again until you missed that second due date. Because the late penalties are put on after the due date.
See, Maggie, that's where I think there was a misunderstanding. And that's why we needed to be clarified because the, I think the understanding, and I know, that's how I was interpreting it, was that if I...
That's not what it says though, it says, if the previous balance was not paid on time, I forgot a month, the five percent penalty is applied to that balance, the eighty dollars, as well as to the current amount due.
Not true, that's not true.
Well, that's the, read the red language.
I know, I didn't read this, I mean, I didn't write this.
Okay, then we need to change that language.
Well, and what I think, if I do the timeline for you, I'll be able to show a bill. What happens when the penalty gets on, okay? When the notifications go out to people, let me do that for you so you can see the whole chronology of what's happening and at what time period.
Yes, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion and it's to accept a report, revised report and recommendation. And it is to, and I'm prepared to vote in affirmative, but it's based on seeing the example and seeing the five percent rule clearly written out. Is there a second?
A second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is the two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget revenue discussion. And, and our first item is general fund revenues. At twenty-two eleven tonight.
Jeff. Give that to Maggie.
Sales tax was thirty-four point seven percent, property tax twenty-seven point one percent, income tax close to thirteen percent. Then we had utility, use tax, cable franchise fees, replacement tax and pull tabs and jar games. Those are mostly from the state. That made up the total tax revenue. Now, here's the, the revenue in the general fund by type. Seven point nine million is taxes. Permits and fees were one point six million in April thirtieth of oh-six. Recall that this is where we had the eight hundred and twenty-one thousand plus excess building permits collected and that has now been transferred to the economic development fund per council direction. But that is an abnormally high number. Usually, building permits themselves run anywhere from four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand. We were way over that last fiscal year. Fines and forfeits, those have gone up, they go up a little bit every year. We'll talk a little more about that when I get to a later slide. Charges for services, this is sort of a mixed bag of types of revenues. We charge different fees, for instance, we have contractor registration now. We charge for plan reviews, other kinds of services like that. We also charge for licenses, vehicle licenses and things like that. So that's what's in that charges for services. Investment income was two hundred and thirteen thousand. You also had in your packet this evening, a treasures report, and you can see that where we have all the money invested for the city. You'll be very happy to see when we get all the budgets in front of you, how much investment income the city is making now that we have changed all the banking arrangements. I mean, we're talking double and triple what you saw in prior years, so that's good news. But the investment income was fairly decent last year in the general fund. Intergovernmental, that covers some grants and some monies that are charged. The fire district pays us for dispatching services. The park district pays the city for bank runs that are made on every day. And then miscellaneous revenues are all sorts of things that come up that we, we didn't really know about. Those are in that, that category. But by far the largest are the fines, the permits and fees and the taxes, that makes up most of the general fund. For April thirtieth of two thousand eight, that picture looks almost identical, at least in terms of the graph. That's because there aren't too many changes. Our property taxes only went up a tiny bit. Income taxes are not expected to increase very much. Sales taxes probably have decreased slightly from the last two years, but they're still, they're still strong, but they're not increasing rapidly, they're basically stagnant. So that's, you'll see this when we finally get to the general fund budget, you'll see that's what makes up the revenue base. There was a survey that was sent in your packets that was performed by the DuPage mayors and managers. And I took some highlights from this. There were twenty-nine communities that were surveyed and most of them provided all the information that was asked for. But sixteen out of those twenty-nine use vehicle stickers to raise revenue and their average cost was twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Based on council action a few months ago, you have now dropped your sticker fee back down to fifteen dollars. So Wooddale is below the average. Eighteen out of twenty-nine imposed the utility tax at an average rate of four point seven percent or two cents per therm. Wooddale has five percent on gas and then electric is variable. And there are, there's a statutory rule about how electric, utility tax can be charged on electricity. And I'm trying to get more clarification on this because I think this, this formula ends in a couple of years and the city may have to make a different decision about how it wants to impose that utility tax on electricity. But that four point seven percent, which was the average, I believe is due to every community using that variable table for the electricity and then charging the five percent for the, for natural gas. Twenty-six out of twenty-nine imposed a telecommunications tax. And the average rate was five point six two five, Wooddale's is at six. Six is what you're allowed by law. Again, I think the average rate came about because a few communities did not charge it across the board. And I'm not exactly sure how they got away with that, but it could be because they're home rule. Twenty-seven out of twenty-nine use a hotel tax, average rate was four point four percent. Wooddale's was at five. Five, five actually is the one that most people are going to use, but a few have a smaller one, especially if they have other revenue sources. Twelve out of those twenty-nine communities are home rule communities and they had a great deal of real estate transfer taxes, something that the city of Wooddale is not allowed to impose. And twenty-six of those twenty-nine communities have a property tax ranging from a range, a rate of point zero one six to one dollar and twenty-seven point two cents. Wooddale was fourteenth in the property tax rates at a rate of point three seven seven four.
May I have a question, our hands are kind of tied on that rate, correct?
Absolutely, there's a tax cap in effect and so...